We will have a moment of silence for the thirteen soldiers that were killed in the rescue mission in Afghanistan. If everyone, please, stand. Please silence your cellphones and remain standing for the pledge.
Our Father who art in heaven, how would it be thy name? We thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given us, those things seen and those things unseen. We thank you for life. We thank you for health. We thank you for strength. We thank you for family and we thank you for friends. We thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us. Now, Lord, we ask that you continue to guide us, keep us, and direct us. Help us to be mindful of thy will in everything that we do. We will continue to give your name the honor, the praise, and the glory. We ask that you bless those families that are dealing with COVID, their loved ones and their friends. Guide them through the terrible times. Guide us through these tough times. Again, we'll give your name the praise in the end. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you please remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Gitz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Felschow?
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one presentation today by our city health director, Mr. Kenneth Coleman, please.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, city manager. Just to come to give you the weekly update as to where we are as relates to COVID. When I was last with you guys on the seventeenth, in Jefferson County, we had five hundred and seventy-eight newly diagnosed cases of COVID. The report for today is, for August the twenty-fourth through August the thirtieth, we have an additional one thousand eighty-three newly diagnosed cases in Jefferson County. Last week when I was with you, we had sixteen deaths. This week, we have thirty-one deaths in Jefferson County. Of that thousand eighty-three, nine hundred and seventeen is in the jurisdictions that the Beaumont Health Department is responsible for. In the same jurisdiction, we have fifteen deaths, and of those fifteen deaths, only three was fully vaccinated. When we look at school age, fourteen to seventeen years old, last week when I was with you, that age group represented sixteen percent of the total cases in Jefferson County. As I speak to you today, that same age group represent twenty-eight percent of the total cases in Jefferson County, as well as twenty-six percent of the total cases in Beaumont. So as we can see, in school age kids, the cases have doubled, and we see that in the number of schools in our local area that's closing due to the rising cases of COVID in the school system. When I was with you last, the hospital census was, we had two hundred and sixty-two COVID patients, which ninety-one percent was unvaccinated. We had seventy on ventilators, which ninety-nine percent was unvaccinated. Numbers as of yesterday, we had two hundred and forty-six COVID patients, ninety-two percent unvaccinated, fifty-five on ventilators, one hundred percent unvaccinated. In our trauma service area, and we know that consists of nine counties with one point three million-plus people, as of yesterday, they have one ICU bed available in the nine county area. COVID hospitalization in our trauma service area is thirty-nine percent, and in Jefferson County is thirty-five percent is the number of COVID people in the hospital out of the total hospital capacity. We have a little bright spot with the increase in the number of school age kids getting vaccinated. I was with you last, it was thirty-four percent. That has increased to thirty-seven percent. So we are seeing an increase in school age kids getting vaccinated, but we also see an increase in the number of school age kids testing positive, and again, it shows in the number of school districts that's surrounding us who are closing. I also read a report this morning on Channel Twelve News that there's an eleven-year-old that attends Buena High School, and currently she's on life support. So that's our daily update as to where we are locally as relates to COVID, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Man.
Councilmember?
We failed to post this as an item, so there can't be any discussion on it. It's just a status report. We'd intended to post it on an agenda going forward each Tuesday. For some reason, it wasn't posted for the day.
Thank you. Thank you so very much for the report.
Thank you.
On a lighter note, I have an announcement. We'd like to congratulate Dean Conwell, Executive Director of our Convention and Visitors Bureau and staff for receiving four awards at last week Texas Association of Conventions and Visitors Bureau convention. The four awards include first place for local awareness, judges award for tourism branding, first place for sports marketing, second place for convention promotion, and also the CBB received the twenty-twenty-one John Vodar Spirit of the United Way Award and the United Way of Beaumont and North Jefferson County Annual Meeting. So to Dean Conwell and the staff of our Convention Visitors Bureau, we would like to thank you for a job well done. Now's the time for any citizen that would like to speak. If you haven't already done so, please go to the back of the room, fill out the green slip, bring it to the clerk that's sitting to my right, your left. You will have three minutes. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes. The red light will be your indication that your three minutes are up.
I don't have any at this time, mayor.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion for the consent agenda? I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of the first item, please, Mr. Manager?
Mayor and council item number one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty, Section Twenty Point Oh Three Point Zero Zero Four of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas by restructuring the school zones speed limit list, providing for severability, providing for appeal, and providing a penalty. Staff received a request to change the school zone times from the Beaumont Independent School District. All existing school zone times were checked for accuracy and corrected if necessary. Times are set so that the zones are active forty-five minutes prior to the first activity of the day and extend thirty minutes past the first bell. In the afternoons, the zones are active thirty minutes prior to the closing bell and for forty-five minutes afterwards. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I have one.
Councilmember Durio.
Under the Beaumont United, on the first page, under direction of travel, it says Fourth Street from north to south, then it says Fennett Road from north to south, and those two streets run perpendicular to each other. So is one of them supposed to be east to west and one of them supposed to be north to south? Can you see like the travel flow for Fennett would be more east to west and north to south?
I can check on that and confirm it. We didn't modify anything in the ordinance other than the times this time around, so if that is a discrepancy, it's been there from the past, but I will check that and we'll come back and correct it later if need be.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of the second item, please?
Mayor and council, item number two is to consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Brastar Contracting Incorporated of Beaumont for the South Twenty-Third Street roadway rehabilitation project. The project consists of the removal and replacement of concrete pavement, the curb, the curb inlets, and other storm sewer structures. The administration recommends this project be awarded, again, to the lowest bidder, Brastar, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. A total of sixty calendar days are allocated for the project. Funds are available in the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the second item. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
A second? Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gitz, please.
Bart, what are the street limits of the project on Twenty-Third, from where to where?
This piece of Twenty-Third's right off of Fennett Road, and it just dead ends at the present time. So it's a very short section. Currently serves one existing address and one property that's building and potentially some expansion down the line, but it's just a very short segment of road.
Councilmember Durio.
I had the same question. I didn't realize that Twenty-Third Street ran into Fennett, but I think I know where it is, right about on the side of the canal, right there?
Yes, sir.
Robotics Place is.
Yes, the Robotics Place, which is shut down right now. I think they moved. That's the building that was on this. And what had happened is that some time back, there was some problems with the main sewer line that was running under that road in close proximity, and due to the subsidence of the base from that sewer line problem, that roadway failed. It was buckled on the concrete. So we've slip lined the sewer a while back, so that's all fixed, but there were so many panels that required replacement. It made the most sense to just go ahead and do the whole thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Gitz.
How old is the road that failed? When was that put in?
I do not have the date of original construction. It's been there for some time.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of the next item, please?
Mayor and council, item number three is to consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Brastar Contracting Incorporated for the debris excavation, loading, and hauling work at the Lawsons Canal site off of Marina Drive. The administration recommends this project be awarded, again, to Brastar in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand for the base bid and in the amount of six thousand dollars for the additive bid, so a total of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand. A total of thirty calendar days are allocated for completion of the project. Funds are available in the water fund. The administration recommends approval.
Council, you've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
Question.
Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Managers, what was the final cost of Phase One?
About two hundred and twenty-four thousand, and if you approve this today, total of four hundred thousand. It's something that we have to do, I'd say, when the Corps of Engineers contacts you, and this was authorized in the administration's opinion by someone we're in a lawsuit with right now that used to work here. Shouldn't have been done, and then the Corps found out about it and said, you have to take it out. So we're going to spend approximately four hundred thousand dollars taking this debris out and hauling it off.
Is this the final phase?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Durio.
Uh, manager, do you know why there's such a big difference in the bid amounts?
We don't. Mr. Parkowiac might know, but it's a good bid in our opinion, so we're, they're a very reputable contractor, so we're pleased that it came in.
Yeah, we're confident in their ability to do the work, but they came in dramatically lower, which we're happy with. I'm not exactly sure why. All right. Thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. The city manager, can you please take us into our discussion item?
Yes, ma'am. The discussion item is to review and discuss the city's emergency management plan, and Shaquina Nobles is going to come forward and give you the background information, and we're required to have a public hearing afterwards.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muton, City Council. How y'all this afternoon? I'm coming before you guys this afternoon just to give you a background and an update of the city's emergency operations plan that's required by us by government code four eighteen, which requires us to have a plan and then do a public review of the actual plan itself. Is there a slide advanced? Next slide. Is it up here? Is there a slide advanced up here? Oh, okay, next slide, sorry. Currently, the city's plan is posted on the city's website, the Emergency Management tab. The city plan is made up of the basic plan and twenty-two functional plans and annexes that support the plan itself. That plan is available online for anybody who wishes to read or go through the plan. Additionally, the emergency management personnel, myself, and Sergeant Captain Tim Moknecheck with the Beaumont Police Department, the coordinators and deputy coordinators. Our contact information is also listed on the webpage for anybody wishing to provide feedback. You can contact us directly through that as well. Our emergency management plan currently is working the COVID-19 pandemics. We're working with supporting city departments, state, and federal partners with certain COVID pandemic operations that have been ongoing since the start of the pandemic. We also have ongoing recovery efforts that date back as far back as some Harvey that's going on. We had Hurricanes Laura, Tropical Storm Beta, Hurricane Delta last year. We're still doing recovery operations for those disasters that we had, and additionally, we had the wind to weather disaster earlier this year that you guys, I'm sure, quite well remember. So we're still doing recovery operations as there. We also work several hazmat incidents as they occur on the highways there. In support of our plan, we have a major event planning team that's made up of several different departments and divisions throughout the city as well, and we coordinate and facilitate on average about thirty or so major events every year annually, and those events include things like Mardi Gras, the different gift of life marathons, and those types of major events there as well. We do anticipate seeing an increase in those types of events once some of the constraints of the COVID pandemic relieves, but that's pretty much where we stand now, last year and this year as well. I also facilitate several different exercises that test the plan itself to ensure and help us to identify any logistical shortfalls or functions that we may have within the plan itself. Earlier this year, we facilitated and completed the citywide and regional complex coordinated terrorist attack plan that we have. That part of that exercise was a part of a three-year planning period to have that comprehensive plan in place, and we completed that in May of this year. In June of this year, we completed the stand mass notification drill, which basically just tests the mass notification platform that we use to notify, be able to send out mass notifications there, and then we do additional response drills with agency partners as well. Currently, for the next year, we will be continuing to update those plans and those annexes. As I mentioned before, we are required to review those plans annually, and we do a major review of each of those annexes every five years, and we submit that to the state for approval as well, and so we'll continue to do that as well. For fiscal year twenty-two, our family, our planning focus continues to be the response to the public health-related disasters in the COVID-19 pandemic. We did complete that complex coordinated terrorist attack plan, which I introduced to you guys last year, if you remember. We'll be continuing to participate with those citywide planning teams, such as the major event planning team, and we'll continue to do significant outreach. We do a lot of outreach programs with our community, with different organizations within the community, and that's all of that supports the planning efforts that we have. And then we have several staff, myself and Tim, we participate in many state legislative advisory committees and emergency management committees. We represent the city as well as the region as well. Beginning this year, we have started working on the major revision to the five-year hazard mitigation plan. That plan will be brought back to you guys for approval. We started that planning process, and it's currently in the works to be done now, and that, to make or come up with that plan, we partner with several of the different supporting agencies, supporting divisions, as well as city departments as well. To support our planning efforts, we rely on some of the grants that's listed here on the PowerPoint itself. Our Emergency Management Performance Grant is a grant that we use that does some reimbursement for the actual program itself and the planning. It supports a lot of the plans and processes that we have there. We have applied for the Port Security Grant for this year, and we are participating in the State Homeland Security Program in COVID-19 funding for equipment and payroll reimbursement for that disaster, as that is still ongoing. Some training that we have done to support our planning efforts includes the complex coordinated attacks. We do radiological plans. We test the incident command system. We do that, and we provide that NIMs training to all citywide personnel twice a year, beginning in January and then again in September as well, and then we facilitate any after-action reviews on major incidents, events, or exercises as they occur during our planning year. All of our incident-related information that we have for any incidents that occur are ongoing can be found on the city's webpage there. We have a City of Beaumont Office of Emergency Management Facebook page, where we also post updated information regarding incidents as they occur, and our citizens are encouraged to visit both of those sites as well. Additionally, some of the same emergency management training that we provide can also be found online at FEMA's training site there. There's emergency planning templates for the citizens, as well as businesses, and other direct links posted there. We also encourage our citizens to register their cellphone so that they can receive outreach alerts from us, and these are non-emergent alerts. It's just general outreach alerts there that they have. If they give us our cellphone number, we'll have it, and we'll be able to do that as I spoke briefly about some of the community awareness programs that we have, and we have additional ones there that I didn't go in great lengths about, but Sky Warren is a weather service training program that we have. We have the Community Active Shooter that has been extremely popular in the past years. We do public safety plans. We offer Emergency Operations Center tours for any citizens or organizations that want to come and visit the ELC, and we strongly encourage that as well, and we do general emergency management presentations as well, just to keep our citizens and our community abreast of what our program is doing, what our plan is doing, and where we are. We provide those EM plans, templates, and samples at those different community awareness programs. If you look on our website, our Facebook site, you will find evacuation checklist tips, Go Kid checklist, and household inventory, things that you can do to be prepared for any type of disaster. Our plan is all hazard and all comprehensive regardless as to what hazards we're facing and what particular season, and I say that because we're standing in the middle of hurricane season right now. So at the end of the day, our end goal is to be, for our plan is to be resilient and provide resiliency for our citizens and for our community. That's all I have.
Thank you so very much. Do we have any questions? Thank you so very much, Shaquina. Mr. Manager, will you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, the public hearing is to receive comments regarding the city's emergency management plan. We'd ask that you hold that, and then I think we're done.
I will now open the floor for the public hearing. Again, if you would like to speak on the public hearing, make sure that you filled out the form, the green slip at the back of the room, hand it to the clerk, and she will call your name. You will have three minutes to speak. The green light is on, and then at the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on. Thank you.
I don't have any, mayor.
Wow, I'm surprised. Okay, no other comments on that? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. At this time, we will have public comment.
Alto Watson, twenty-six fifteen Gladys, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. It's nice to see the management plan doing well, especially with what happened in Louisiana. That was a great idea. Have all kinds of planning, all kinds of documents, all kinds of registration, all kinds of look. It's the same thing that ought to be done to redo the river. All that planning, I don't see any planning here. One of the complaints I've always had is that in the city of Beaumont, we take a building, our beautiful old building, and we tear it down, and we put up a parking lot, and we say, a beautiful old building used to be here. That is Beaumont's idea of historical preservation. It's got to stop. This is the time to stop it. I watched the program last week. I didn't want to be a focus of anything, so I let the Battleship Texas people come speak for themselves. Some of the things I saw in the video were important, so I brought a bunch of printouts from the Internet, and y'all all have a copy of it. And so I took some, one of the questions was numbers, and I believe, Councilman Neal, I hope your dad is okay. And so, the Battleship of North Carolina. This is in a little bit town in Wilmington, North Carolina. Unbelievably, its population is one hundred and twenty-three thousand people, just like the city of Beaumont. It's on a river, close to the coast. The county has fifty thousand less residents than Jefferson County. It has two hundred thousand people. If you look at the first, printout the third page, they have a quarter of a million people come to this battleship. That's on the third page of the first set of documents I had them jimmy-jacked, all right? There is nothing, I've been to Wilmington, Delaware. There is nothing there. Excuse me, Wilmington, North Carolina. There is nothing there, and the battleship is across the river from downtown. It's hard to access. That's one of the problems with where it is now. Number one, it's in saltwater. They don't want it in saltwater. Beaumont is the place to put it. Number two, you can't get to it. It's the biggest hassle in the world. You got to go across the Ship Channel, that little bitty tugboat, okay? Thing is dangerous as hell. Thing is dangerous as hell. That's why they want it here, where you can see it. The second printout I have for you is the Battleship attendance for the USS Alabama, which is placed on Interstate 10. It's out in the middle, it's out on the far side of town, but you can see it directly from the highway. As of 2018, they had 335,717 people looking at this battleship and there is nothing there. Nothing. There is no infrastructure, there's no museum, there's no restaurant, there's no nothing. And there's 335,000 people, and I think it's more now, I think it's over 400,000. The next one I brought is the USS Iowa, which is in Los Angeles, okay? May I go just a little bit farther, ma'am?
I'll give you just a few more minutes.
It just, the USS Iowa, it is the fourth most popular museum of 131 museums and the battleship is the sixth most popular of 623 tourist attractions in Los Angeles, as if there's nothing else to do. This is a nationwide poll from USA Today. You will notice on the third page that the Battleship Texas, based on nationwide poll, is the third-best museum ship in the country, many steps above the one in Corpus Christi. Last one I have is the USS Missouri, based in Honolulu, Hawaii, as if there's nothing else to do in Honolulu, Hawaii, and they attract 500,000 people to this battleship. 500,000. So they've had 9 million people come see it since 1999. So if you want numbers, every single battleship museum in this country draws a quarter of a million people. And that could happen here. You'd fix Crockett Street, you'd fix the Hotel Beaumont, you'd fix all these problems down here.
Thank you.
Christopher Matthews, 3875 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, City Council. I came specifically to speak to you, Councilman Getz. I'm not done with you. It's not cool to go to homeless events, walk in, get a spatula, get an apron, take a picture, and leave. Stop the foolishness. It's not cool to go to the Sterling Pruitt Center and talk down to a girl that really loves her job, but she's special needs, okay? She's got a learning disability. That's not cool. I'm telling you right now, I have a sister like that. If you would have spoke to my sister like that, I'd be in Jefferson County, I guarantee you. That stuff is not cool. You've got to stop the foolishness. You're stirring up people like Mr. Watson here, that come up here and say stuff like...
Excuse me. Chris, please don't, don't call any names.
Mayor, I'm going to eject to the lack of decorum by Mr. Matthews here. He's violating our policy about addressing council members directly.
And that's why I just, you can make your comments, just don't call the name. Thank you.
Okay. This guy back here, Mr. Watson.
Chris, don't call the name. Thank you.
The citizen that spoke before me came up here and said, "We need to celebrate Confederate victories in Port Arthur by Dick Dowlin." That's the kind of people you stir up, man. And you've got to stop, man. This is your last term and I'm going to make sure it's my personal, I'm going to make sure that I personally see to it that this is your last term. Next time you try to run, I'm going to be sure that you are not in office, man, because you want to appoint people like, I can't call names, but he's sitting right behind me and he reeks of alcohol right now. I hope he wasn't driving, I really do. But this man is not from Beaumont and he's not been laboring in our community. And he just wanted to come out here and you just want to appoint him to some position like, come on, Mr. Getz, you've got to stop. Thank you, y'all have a nice day.
Nicholas Hunger, 9155 Mates, Beaumont, Texas.
Afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council, City Attorney. I'm Nick Hunter. I've lived in Beaumont for pretty much my whole life. We moved here shortly after, my first memories were in Port Arthur. We moved here in the early 90s. I remember vividly moving into Beaumont and seeing the population sign being around 100,000. Now here we are, you know, 20 years later, population's still around 100,000, right? So clearly, there hasn't been any growth in people, which doesn't make sense to me. So in May, I was presented with an opportunity that was going to be a life-changing opportunity for me. So, but for this to happen, I would need to headquarter my business away from Beaumont. My heavenly father told me that that's what, that wasn't my journey. That's not what I was supposed to be doing. I was supposed to headquarter my business here and give back to my community, because the community is what built me. I was raised by a single mom who worked constantly just to keep a roof over our heads and throughout her journey and her work ethic, to see all that she put in so that I could have the opportunities that I have, I said I wasn't ever going to have anything less for my children. And that's where we're at today. We've added eight more jobs in the city of Beaumont in the last 60 days. We have started a nonprofit organization that's raised over $23,000 in funds that we have to go and find something to do with. And more than anything, we need manpower. We need people to actually get in and do the work. Mike actually posted a picture over the weekend about the new Habitat for Humanity thing, so I went down there this morning to go help out and there was only two or three people there. So regardless of who's trying to do what, if there's something positive that can be done in this community, like, I feel like this council is doing and is progressing towards a more positive Beaumont, a more culturally sensitive Beaumont. And the, the push for the Battleship Texas, not only do I think it's not sound financially, but more importantly, is, it contributes to the, the romanticization of our military as we're pulling away from a 20-year war where we left an entire country in shambles, who was already in shambles before we got there and now we're turning our back on the refugees that we put in that position. So to highlight what our military has done to the world and in this time, I don't think it's a good move for the city of Beaumont. I think that we should be doing more proactive things in our community and the homeless situation that we have right now is moving from downtown into the West End. In my neighborhood right now, there are homeless people sleeping in Epstein Park, is it Epstein Park? I can't remember, but the park that's right near my neighborhood, the park that I want to get, use these funds that I've been raising to get the park to where I'd actually let my kids go play there or get a dog park built there so we can get people there. And also, Madam Mayor, please institute a mask mandate. What the governor has done is illegal, it's immoral, and people in our community are dying because they're not getting vaccinated and they're not wearing masks.
Thank you.
Brian Nepo, 3415 Laurel, Beaumont, Texas. Did he leave? That's all I have then, there.
Thank you. So now I will move into council comment and I'm going to start with you, Mr. Durya.
Thank you, Mayor. Only thing I want to say is let's keep the folks from Louisiana, from Louisiana in our prayers, a lot of them are coming through our town, needing help. I hosted a few of them over at my home and fed them yesterday. So anything we can do to help, like I was telling them, because next week, it could be us seeking the same type of help. So just, they're out there, they're at hotels, they're all over the place. If you know any, do what we can to help, help them out. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. This Thursday at 2 o'clock, here in City Hall, Council Chambers, we're going to have a very special meeting. It's a joint meeting of the Mayor's Homeless Coalition and the City Council. And we will be presenting two years' worth of work, some, a summary of recommendations and plans to implement to help combat the homeless situation that is occurring in Beaumont. I encourage all citizens to attend. It is open to the public. There will be a lot of very good and valuable information put forth there. I appreciate the staff in helping prepare the PowerPoint presentation that will be used. This, one of the things that will be talked about is the shelter on McFadden that the Salvation Army is renovating with the help of Habitat for Humanity. This morning, I was out there at 8 o'clock, helping to tear down the old fence and right now they're constructing the new fence. So we would have liked to have had more people. I think there were about six or seven that were there this morning, but it was enough to get the old fence torn down and they are erecting the new fence now. Very important meeting, please, please attend. With regard to some other comments that were made, I want to talk to the council and the public for a minute about the Battleship Texas. First, I appreciate very much the staff asking the Battleship Texas Foundation people coming last week. They presented us with some very good information. And then they followed up at the city request to provide us with their request for proposal. And this request for proposal states very clearly what they are looking for. Under the project description, it says Battleship Texas Foundation is seeking a location for the Battleship Texas that will A, provide 280,000 paid visitors annually. As I've said before, there's 87,500 people that go across the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge every day. That's over 200,000 people going across the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge every day. We just need to pull off a few of them to come in to tour the battleship and they'll meet their numbers. B, they want a location visible and easily accessible by the Battleship Texas visitors. The battleship would be visible from the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge. C, has either pure space or the ability to create a mooring. We have that. D, provides enough room for a gift shop and/or museum building. As far as the gift shop, they want a 3,000-square-foot gift shop and they say there should be enough space to allow the shoreside footprint to eventually include a 10,000-square-foot-plus museum building that will house exhibits, the ship's artifact collections, and the administrative offices of the Battleship Texas Foundation in the future. I'll get back to that point in a second. E, they want sufficient parking. And F, they need the required utilities, which of course, the city of Beaumont can provide. As to the parking, the gift shop, and the museum, you know, things seem to happen for a reason sometimes. And as we know, I was very much opposed to the city purchasing the AT&amp;T Building. However, it may be the best thing that the city's done in a long time, because that building could be used to provide the museum and a gift shop and the parking for the Battleship The Battleship Texas Foundation is already leaning towards coming to Beaumont. The other sites that they've looked at have problems. Corpus Christi has the Lexington Aircraft Carrier. They don't want to compete. Baytown has $20 million worth of dredging that they're going to have to do. It renders it impractical. Galveston has its own set of problems. They like Beaumont. We need to think about not tearing that building down, not building a park, but leasing that building to the Battleship Texas Foundation. We could, we're in control of the building and I'm completely aware of the provision in the contract that Mr. Flanagan has a right to repurchase the building from the city if the city doesn't tear it down. But we have to remember that Mr. Flanagan has 50% interest in Crockett Street and he has a vested interest in making sure that the battleship gets here because it will bring people downtown. And that's the whole objective of what we're trying to do, isn't it? To bring people downtown? So I'm urging this council to adjust its thinking and consider this possibility for the real possibility that it is. It is the possibility to bring people downtown, to revitalize people downtown. Mr. Watson, I didn't ask you to be here today. I appreciate your presence. I appreciate your information. And I did not know that the Battleship Texas was the third most highly-rated museum ship in the country until I saw this that you provided. But that's interesting information. So, so again, it might be appropriate to consider this in a workshop or even an executive session, since the lease of a building is one of the exceptions to the Open Meetings Act that we can talk about in executive session. I'd encourage us to take advantage of this opportunity, because opportunities like this don't come around very often. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Shah.
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Councilmember Neal. City Manager, Attorney. Thank you. I'm a little hot under here, so I do have comments today. I would like to say that I want to thank Sheriff Stevens for her public service announcement, urging and asking everyone that is not vaccinated, everyone that is not wearing a mask, to please do so. I am also urging each citizen in the city that you reside in to please get vaccinated. The numbers today from our Public Health Director in one week is 1,083 positive test I don't know what more could be said. I don't know what more we need to realize that we have a problem. It's a domino effect. It start off with an infection to our hospitals being full and we're starting the whole process all over again. And if we don't get a handle on it, we're going to be back to where we were last year when a country shut down. So again, please, please, get vaccinated. Our city health department are giving vaccinations Monday through Friday. If need be, there will be people on the weekends giving them. As a matter of fact, this Saturday at the L.L. Milton, there will be free vaccinations given. And it's now called Sarah Street Wellness Group. So September the 4th, from 6:00 to 10:00, free food, free COVID vaccinations, bring your lawn chairs, live entertainment from a group called The City. The address is 3455 Sarah. Please go out, because that will be a Saturday that you can be vaccinated. Also, to our friends and neighbors in Louisiana, praying for them. God spared us this time. Thank God. We missed it. To our emergency management team, Ms. Nobles, Officer Agnieszek, thank you so very much for the up... thank you so very much for the update. As you said, all of the information is on the Beaumont website. Please register your phones with scan. You can continue to get all updated information. And congratulations to our Conventions Visitors Bureau. Uh, they really do a great, uh, job in promoting Beaumont, uh, also promoting our facilities here for people that are out of town to come in to our city, um, and spend their dollars here. So, uh, again, Dean Conwell, thank you for a job well done. And it is 2:20 and we will adjourn. Thank you for coming.